Good evening, Happy St. Patrick's Day. I will now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March the 17th to order. Roll call.
Duncan.
Here.
Gallops.
Here.
Post.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Shobloom.
Here.
Mayor Robinson.
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Merle and a second by Bill to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to item five this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not only, not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Rosie?
Mike says if you can see it, he'll get it on camera. Okay, Rosie Schluter, Stanton Township. I was going to meet at, with the Park Commission or the Park Board, and then I found out you don't have a Park Board anymore. So, I'm here with you guys. What we are presenting, what we're working on again, I'm working with Tom Bergerson with Public Works, is outdoor, excuse me, outdoor exercise equipment to benefit health along the city trail. We have the opportunity to improve the health of individuals at no cost to them if we can put up upper body exercise equipment at various points along the trail. They get the cardio and the workout by walking and jogging or biking, but not the upper body. And so we thought it'd be kind of cool to do that. As I understood it, we would be the first trail to do that. This equipment is in city parks and things like that, but not along a trail. So what I had done originally was I took pictures of different areas that I thought would be appropriate along the trail, and then the company superimposed their equipment on them so you can see what it would look like. I picked some of the places that I thought would be most appropriate. I also had advice from a Mayo-affiliated physical therapist and the manager of Snap Fitness, and they were all supportive and picked out which machines they thought would work. I have two, I had two donors and a third one trying appropriately, but I had to take some time off last year due to some health issues with my husband, so now I'm back on it again. Sponsors will be noted on the site with, with a special plaque, and this will be from the City of Cannon Falls. The trail is owned by the City of Cannon Falls, and the dedication plaques and the upkeep will be taken care of by the Public Works Department, but there are no public funds for this equipment, so that's why I'm going for donors. We are having a public meeting next Tuesday at the library, six o'clock, and so I want you to know about that, and I hope we can get this off the ground this year. Yes. Any questions?
Rosie, have you talked to the county yet, to maybe their environmental health people, to, to see if there might be something to some of their projects?
Didn't know about that. I can look into that.
Yeah. I'll get you.
They had been looking into doing something in Red Wing, but I wanted to get ours done first.
I'll get, I'll get you a name.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Anybody else wishing to address the council?
Hello, everyone. My name is Joyce Morgan. I live here in the City of Cannon Falls. I have a couple of questions and concerns. First of all, I would like to know who is official news, newspaper for the City Council?
The Beacon.
The Beacon.
The Beacon is? Are they supposed to be printing the minutes of the meetings, or what are they supposed to be printing?
They are supposed to be printed, I mean, they get put in the Beacon, correct?
Yeah, I'd have to check with Lenell.
I don't believe they're put in the Beacon. I believe there's a copy on hand at the library, Justin. Do we have? Oh, we used to.
I can check on that for you.
Yep.
But our assistant, my assistant is not here. She's at a conference tonight, so she would be the one to direct that question to, so I can help you out with that.
I'd also like to know if it's not there, if we can make sure that a copy gets into the library. There's a lot of people that, elderly people that are interested in that, that live downtown, that can't get to and don't know anything about how to run internet. That was the other thing I'd like to know.
At the library, we can certainly help you access them. If you come in, we can set you.
You mean the internet?
Yeah. We can, we can pull it up for you. It'll be right there, and you just have to read through them.
I know how to do it, but there's people that are so frightened of it, they think those keys are gonna bite them.
We'll walk them through the process.
I'm telling you that.
Not a problem. You can tell them to ask for me, and I'll handle it all for them.
Okay. I've been reading a lot about the charter of the City Council meetings, and, please forgive me if I'm gonna step on anybody's toes, but I feel I have to. I see the City Attorney's chair is empty, and the reason I'm addressing this is you guys are going through some really, really tough things going on right now with County Road 24 and the zip rail. In the City Charter, it states that you are to have a City Attorney at every meeting, and with these two issues going on right now, I think it's important that you have your City Attorney here to protect the city. I think that's really important, and I'd like to know if you could possibly make sure that there's, that person is here every time, because I wanna protect the city from lawsuits and stuff like that. That's just a comment. In last week's meeting, I can't remember this guy's last name, and I've seen it a thousand times. Ken from the Beacon wrote an article in, a short article in last week's paper, and it was also brought up in the notes that Rosie Schluter had asked the mayor about a question that she had about County Road 24, and she asked, I don't remember the name of the person, she asked another person, she sent him an email, and she was told both times that she couldn't, you couldn't answer that question because the whole group was here. Now, this is an experience that I had today with asking a question of Brad Johnson from the County Commissioners. I asked him a question about County Road 24. He answered the question immediately. He did not have anyone from the commission with him. He, Ken also said that in the past, Rosie had been told that the City Council was not going to be asking her, answering any of her, answering her questions because the media had not been favorable to the City Council. When I read that in the paper, I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm gonna comment on that. I was extremely upset because that is a violation of the constitutional right that we have of freedom of speech. And I would prefer, and I'm sure many citizens of the City of Cannon Falls, the County of Goodhue aren't out from there in the United States, don't ever wanna hear that again. And basically, that's, oh, there is one other thing I'd like to comment on. Last week, I read the minutes of the meeting from the tent on the internet, and last night, I wanted to read them again because I knew I was gonna come and speak at the meeting today, and I wanted to make sure that I had, I understood everything that was said, and I was in quite a shock because the minutes were not the same. They had been changed, and I don't know how that happened. That was the only other thing.
We'll look into that, too.
Thank you. Do you want me to put my name down here?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address? At this time, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I'll read the Consent Agenda. Item A is to adjust and correct claims for the accounting period ending March 12th, 2015. Item B are the meeting minutes for the March 3rd, 2015 City Council meeting. Item C is the purchase of the 2016 Horton ambulance. Item D is the Cannon Arts Board grant support letter, and Item E is Resolution 2122, supporting dedicated state funding for city streets. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down? Seeing as there are none, the Chair will take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I will second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves on to reports.
Just a couple of things, since I haven't been here a while. If you haven't been by to see the local art exhibit, the art challenge that the Arts Board and the library put on, we've got 20 paintings up by local artists that are really exceptional, so if you got a chance to come by, please drop by. Sometime this month, we'll be rotating that collection out, and our next arts challenge will be starting, or it's going on now, if you're into woodworking, sculpture, ceramics, drop by the library and pick up an application, because we'll be reviewing those in April and judging and having another open house. So it's been a really great event with good attendance. The first open house we had back in February, I think it was, end of February, we had over 65 people show up and had a good group of folks and a lot of, we had some young musicians there. They sort of did an impromptu recital, which was really interesting for the community to see. And to sort of selfishly plug, this weekend, if you're available on Saturday at 2:00, drop by the library. It's Johann Sebastian Bach's 330th birthday this year, and Tim Wells, who used to work with the foundation and has worked with the library a lot, and he works over at St. Olaf in, in Northfield, found out about this sort of international festival. So on this map, Cannon Falls is one of the few places in Minnesota that's listed internationally that's actually having this celebration. And what it is, it's for musicians to get together, do free performances on Bach's birthday throughout the world. So Cannon Falls is listed on the world map with all these other people, and Tim Wells will be playing bassoon, and I will attempt to accompany him. So it should be an interesting performance.
I might have to come just to watch that.
Exactly. So that's Saturday afternoon at 2:00.
Thanks, Justin.
Boy, that's a tough one to follow there. I just wanna let you know that we were able to pick up an old male swan. Have you noticed down the pond, they seem to be compatible with the, the male we lost last year. So we'll see what time brings, and they should be nesting here in another month. So, so far, so good.
Good. Yep?
Well, thank you. It's been 10 weeks, start of this week, I guess, on Monday. Just kinda give you a quick update of the department. We've been doing a bunch of just upkeep. I'd say we've moved a bunch of stuff around and trying to make the office area a little more efficient for staff. We ordered some new computers, and we should be hopefully getting on the city server to make things a little more streamless and have Mike be able to do his IT stuff from his office versus always coming down to the ambulance garage and trying to figure it out. It's actually gonna end up saving us some money in the long run, since we won't be paying for a separate internet provider, and it'd just be nice to have everything updated and ready to go. So, other than that, ordered the third monitor that you guys approved a few weeks ago, got that coming, so everything will be streamlined, streamlined there. And the big thing we've been trying to do since I started is just keep the staff in the loop. So every week, I send out what I call my ramblings for the week, and it's just a quick email communication with the staff, just to know what's going on in the department, so no one's feeling left out, and everybody's just involved and kind of more engaged in the department. So I just finished up a survey of the department, and then I wanna look at that information and probably run it out, get together and just review stuff and see where we wanna go as a direction as a group, so.
Thanks. Chief?
Well, you all probably felt the effects of daylight savings time. One of the pluses is that it's lighter later into the evening, which also means that we're gonna have kids playing outside, that type of thing, but the downside is it's dark in the morning. So just remember when you're, you're going to work, you know, kids are adjusting now, but you know, just watch for them. The other thing would be, we're still in March. Temperatures can still get down, we can still get snow. Just remind people to, you know, remember safe driving for winter conditions should that happen. It'll happen.
Thank you. Another note for, for Tim, that Tim and I continue to work with, have discussions with Mayo as far as the Community Paramedic Program, and hopefully we'll be having, bringing forward something, somewhat soon anyway, we think. But just a note, yeah, Tim's been, Tim's been a little busy, cleaning up stuff, and, but the networking, that was really important. It just seemed like kind of an island over there as far as electronically or technologically speaking, and, and now we're bringing them in. We've actually got a, the Fire Chief actually has a city email address now, which is something unique for, for us here, but that's good. Another note, I met today out on site, out on South, out on 63rd and 318, 320th, to, I met with XL and Goodview County Co-op Electric to talk about lighting. Jeff and I have been working on mapping with them with both XL and Goodview. Thank you. Another note for Tim, that Tim and I continue to work with, have discussions with Mayo as far as the community paramedic program, and hopefully we'll be having, bringing forward something somewhat soon, anyway, we think. But just a note, yeah, Tim's been, Tim's been a little busy, cleaning up stuff, and, but the networking, that was really important. It just seemed like kind of an island over there as far as electronically or technologically speaking, and now we're bringing them in. We've actually got a, the fire chief actually has a city email address now, which is something unique for us here, but that's good. Another note, I met today out on site, out on South, out on Sixty-third and Three Eighteenth, Three Twentieth, I met with Excel and Goodhue County Co-op Electric to talk about lighting. Jeff and I have been working on mapping with them with both Excel and Goodhue County, because Goodhue County Co-op Electric serves Sixty-third Avenue of that area. Excel serves east of there. So we met, I was able to meet with those two gentlemen, and I think we have a plan that'll, the area will actually be lit up. Hopefully, can't guarantee a timeframe. Goodhue County Co-op Electric hoped by maybe May first, somewhere in there, but hopefully middle of May, anyway. And Excel had to go back to their lighting design guy for a couple of the standards to look at, but hopefully that's gonna get going, too, because they've been, they've been on board, they've been working with us, so hopefully we'll see some, the light will shine again.
Thanks, Ron.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Yep.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Nothing.
Well, I have nothing either this evening. Everybody have a happy St. Patrick's Day. Be careful out there if you do go out, and other than that, the Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.